Good evening. It is November 12th, 2025, 6:00 PM, and I'd like to call the City Council Meeting to Order. Please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Loy has asked to be excused tonight due to illness, so no problem there. Moving on with roll call, Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Here.
Councilwoman Cock.
Present.
Councilwoman Burns.
Present.
And Councilwoman Lavaca.
Here.
Thank you all for being here. I'm looking for an approval of the agenda, adding an executive session. This would be for possible litigation, so making an approval, please add that in. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilwoman Burns, second by Councilwoman Lavaca. Is that correct? All right, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda, I am looking for a motion. This will be for items one through eight.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Lavaca, second by Councilwoman Cock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. And it looks like you're in. You're on consent agenda. Did you want to make any comments at all, Judge Stiles?
I learned that, that you haven't punched the button to turn it blue before they hear anything. So anyway, appreciate the opportunity to serve Seadruly again as the municipal court judge, so appointed back in 2015. And I was actually looking at my calendar today, and actually come June of 2026, it'll be 40 years here in Seadruly practicing law. So appreciate, again, the opportunity to serve as your judge for part-time. And if you have any questions?
Any questions for Judge Stiles? Councilwoman Cock?
I just wanted to thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you, Brock. All right. And we extended the prosecuting attorney, so... But not you, you're defense, aren't you? No, you're prosecuting attorney. Hello. I only sit in court once in a while.
It's I'm Jim Zachar from Zachar Stock and Crap.
Yeah. Would you like to address them at all?
I would love to.
Okay.
Good evening. I'll try not to be as long-winded as Judge Stiles. But I can't believe it's already been three years that I've been your prosecutor. And I'm, again, I'm the president of Zachar Stock and Crap, Jim Zachar, and I handle Seadruly. I'm here every, just about every Thursday. Again, I can't believe it's been three years already, but I'm looking for another three. I'm excited for new things that I just spoke with Mr. Bush about regarding DV services coming to the city of Seadruly. I'm extremely excited about that program. I deal with it in 11 of my other cities. So I'm really looking forward. Mayor Johnson, happy to see you again. Certainly look forward to more graduation, community court graduations.
Those are some, those are really lovely.
Fortunately, we haven't had people show up for their own graduations, but I know that we're top right now. And I know Judge Stiles is pleased about it, too. We're top out of all the cities in terms of graduation rate for community court, so.
I will have to say that I believe that our, our court is a class act. It really is.
Absolutely.
I've sat in on a couple others, and you two really bring it, you do. Thank you very much. Glad you're going to be joining us again.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. All right. With that, let me see here, City Administrator Report. Charlie, you going to give us an update on Invisio?
Yes, just a brief update on Invisio. Woody's got some documents he's going to pull up. So Invisio is now putting out regular reports for the City Council. You should get those around the 10th of the month or so. Woody, if you can, let's just start with the dashboard. So we have a public dashboard as well, and it's got basically the same information that is included, and this is on our website off the City Council page. Same information that comes out in the emails to the council. That information is just formatted a little bit differently. But this is our public dashboard, and you can see the three City Council goals there, Parks and Rec, Economy, and City Growth. We shortened those just a little bit, just to be able to fit them in, but the detail is down below. So if you, Woody, click on Economy, we'll go, we'll drill down on this. You can drill all the way down to the staff level support on these. So Woody, if you were to click on the, the second one there, it's 24% done. You can see these are on track. They're showing in green if they're on track, so this is something that's going well. This is a pretty complete update that you have here on State Route Nine, Township, John Liner, McGargle Intersection Project, which we're most of the way done. Staff are putting updates in these each month. These reports come out each month. This dashboard gets updated each month, and it's quite transparent and apparent. Anybody in the public can go look at it. And what's really cool for staff as well is we put one update to the system, and it goes to the dashboard, and it goes to the reports. And the next step for this is to take the city's comprehensive plan, once it's done, and to, it's going to take some time, but to put the whole thing in Invisio. And we'll be able to track live progress on the comprehensive plan then with the community through a dashboard like this, and with the council through reports. So just wanted to call your attention to it. This is the work we've been doing with Invisio. In year one, we have a lot more plans to have more dashboards, including performance dashboards for our departments, and to get more plans loaded up in this. And the great thing, again, about the system is, once you have a project like the John Liner arterial project in there, you update it in one place, and it, as long as it's in your other plans, which we have a lot of things that are kind of duplicated across the city, it will go into all those other places. So just wanted to highlight this for council. We're looking to renew this contract here for the next few years, so we're working on that currently. It expires at the end of the year. Okay?
All right.
That's all.
Thank you.
Oh, Woody, I wanted to show the, sorry, I just remembered. I wanted to show the report that goes to council as well, real quick. I had sent that to Woody as well. Here it is.
That's, that's a great idea. And really, so glad you brought this forward. I, I've had opportunity to go through the report, read through it, and it was, was very well done.
So on this report, one of the neat things is the color coding, so you can see, you know, what's on track, but you can also see what's been disrupted, what's been discontinued. There's a project, a parks project that's been discontinued for now, Reed Street, just for the moment. And so it allows you to get a quick snapshot of what's going on in that goal, and then to, to continue to scroll down and see more information, more detail. So it's a little bit of a different outlay, but for council, hopefully this is seamless for you and keeping up to date on, on how we're doing. And our big challenge, as you'd imagine, is making sure that staff are updating these timely. So we continue to work on that. You'll see some of our reports still have our report template in it. So we've got some work to do to fill in the rest of this, but we're making progress. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Charlie, for bringing this forward, bringing this program forward. It really does give a lot of information that otherwise I don't know that we would have staff time to actually calculate and collect. So, yeah, it's, it's wonderful. So thank you very much. And that is, that is in your email, if you haven't seen it. So, all right. Moving on then to council reports. Councilwoman Kestie?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Thank you. Only one thing. We were able to reach out to Councilwoman Loy today and, and check up on him. Councilwoman Kestie was able to get him on the phone. Seems like he's in good spirits, and he's eager to get back, so we wish him well, and we hope that he recovers quickly and is not in any pain, and we certainly keep him in our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cock?
Just a few things. Oh, first of all, we had a meeting of the Planning and Business Development Committee, and I thought there was some really good discussion. We were talking about mural signs and design standards, and I thought we came up some really good ideas that'll next go to the Planning Commission, and then it'll eventually come back to us, so we'll have the final word on it. A couple of other things. Thanks to all the veterans for their service to our nation, such as the, my colleague to my left, Ellen Henderson. A shout out to police. My relatives were in, who live in town said, this is a couple of weeks ago, said a suspicious person crossed through their property. They saw police and a canine dog, and they talked to an officer. But what impressed my relatives is that the officer returned to tell them that the person had been apprehended, and they really appreciated the follow-up. So that was really good professionalism. And just a note of something I really liked is to see the, the red tile roofs going up on Olmsted Park, which will, you know, have a similar look to Northern State, so that's, that's really nice to see. Thank you.
Yeah, we did that to make it look seamless. We wanted people as they drove up to me, yeah.
They, they worked fast up there, too.
Yeah, they do. Our team's doing, doing a good job up there. Thank you, Bill. Yeah. Councilwoman Burns?
Well, it is awesome to see Olmsted Park coming together. I look forward to enjoying that, and the nice weather. And I also wanted to, to thank our, our veterans for their service. Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was asked to, we're told to mention that the streets downtownship are really looking good, especially with the, the painting done that's over at the roundabout. But the streets are much smoother since the work's been done, and it seems to be just a really big accent to the, to that side of the community, for sure. So very cool on that. It's kind of ours, but not so much ours, but that building downtown, the flower shop getting painted up, is starting to look a lot better with the white and the gray trim, and so comments on that. Even though we started that with the grant program, I think it's on the homeowner or the building owner at this point going forward, but still, yeah, it's nice to see that coming to completion as well. So really cool there. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I, too, want to extend a thanks to the vets. Thank you for their service, and thank you, Councilwoman Henderson, for your service. And also wanted to say that we do send our thoughts and prayers to Councilwoman Loy, and I did have a chance to speak with his wife tonight, which was good. It was good. Couple of things that pertain to the council has to do with the November 18th, at 6:00 PM, at the Mount Vernon Commons, we are having a housing task force meeting. Our own Nicole McGowan is on that. They're going to be discussing strategies to address our housing shortage. The keynote speaker will be William Krieger. He's an excellent speaker, and he has great experience and a lot of passion, actually, in building sustainable designs for affordable housing. So would encourage you to give that some thought. This is through North Star. I actually put in your packet, just so you have it, some information from North Star that has to do with housing. I know that this has been mailed out to you, and if you attended the, the joint council meetings that we've had, you've actually received some of this, but just for your information, so something that you can refer back to and just see where we are at here in the Skagit Valley. And the other piece to this, speaking of housing, is an open house, November 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. This will be our housing forum. It has to do with our comp plan, and it's going to be held at the community center. Again, that's, I think that's a Tuesday night, I'm not sure. The open house, November 20th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And then just one last thing. Because we do support the Y, I received this flyer in the mail, and it talks or it speaks to the housing that they have in Mount Vernon, and how many youth are able to be housed because of this, and so I wanted to share that with you. So just a bit of information pertaining to the, to the services that we support, service groups that we support. That is it for me. Moving on to public comment, it is 6:13. I will open it up for public comment. I asked that you keep it to three minutes. Nobody signed up for it, but is there anybody in the council or in the chamber here who would like to give public comment? Okay, going once, twice, gone. So I will close public comment, and we will move on then to business at hand, which is actually our public housing, our public hearing. And the first item is ordinance 210825, 2026. This is the property tax. We do have to have a hearing, even though this is a second reading. It looks like Kelly, you're going to look for action tonight. You want us to give action. So the way that this will move is first, Kelly will give us an overview of this ordinance and speak to the property taxes, then I will open it up to the public. They have the opportunity to make any, ask any questions or comments. Once that is done, I will turn it back over to the council, and then you will have opportunity to ask questions or comments. So with that, Kelly, I'm going to open it up and give it to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. So the city passed property, or the city must pass a property tax ordinance annually as part of the budget process to establish the total property tax we will levy in the upcoming year. And then that ordinance, along with some other documentation, needs to be turned into Skagit County by, by November 28th. So the attached documents include two draft versions of the 2026 property tax ordinance, one with the recommended 1% increase and one with 0% increase. Both versions include the new construction amount of $84,000 and the refund levy amount of $2,583. Just some additional information. Since 2008, the city has passed the 1% increase three times, in 2008, 2009, and 2023. And also has received levy lid lift for additional police services in 2020, and 2020, and then the additional fire services in 2024. Couple of things that we noted last time as well, that an annual increase of, the annual increase of 1% reduces our likelihood of needing to go out for a levy lid lift in the future. And then just some data that the proposed 1% increase would increase property of about $532,000 by $14 a year, or $1.17 per month.
Okay. See, but do you have any question? Oh, I'll open it up to the public, I guess we're doing. Is there anybody who would like to give comment in public hearing regarding to the property tax? Okay, hearing and seeing none. I will move this to the council, and does council have any questions, comments, concerns that you have of Kelly? Go ahead, Councilman Cock.
Yes. So I thought quite a bit about this. I understand that the inflation, I, I had a, I looked at a chart about how much inflation's gone up in the last year nationally, and it's pretty much across the board. That does affect our services. I get it, especially, I think, Kelly said 76% of our expenses are personnel. However, our, the people in our town are hurting. I heard something at the elections forum. I don't know if it's true, but I think it came from city data that 20% of Seadruly population makes under $35,000 a year. That's very tough, and as expensive as things are. So, and then when I heard about the $84,000 in new construction, and we're also have the sale of that property that is now helping hands, I think we're okay. I would be in favor of not raising taxes this year, the property tax. Thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. I agree. After considering everything that we've had a chance to look at, including our discussion at our last meeting, we don't need this. We, we absolutely do not need to reach into the taxpayers' pockets again for any more money than we already have. If, if we want to counteract the need in the future to reduce a levy lid lift, we need to first look at cuts within, within our budget of anything that is in there that we can take out. So I would absolutely not be in favor of doing the 1% increase on this ordinance. I would be in favor of passing it with a 0% increase. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I would be in agreement with Councilman Cock and Councilman Henderson on that as well, the 0% increase with the additional, and then we can look at other, other cuts we can make. I know that it does help with certain levies. I'm asked quite a bit now, especially with the community center incident, when are we going to get that officer at the, at the high school that we paid for? So until we reach these goals of those levies, I wouldn't even say, I couldn't see us, like, petitioning for more money for a levy increase anyways. So I think we'd be good with what we got, for sure. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I just had a quick question.
Yes.
With the 2024 fire services levy, in relation to the 1%, when we, when that levy did pass by the voters, what percentage did that increase the levy? If, if we could get that, was it like 15% of what that 1% would have been, or?
It, it was much more than, more than that, I believe. We increased the levy by a little over a million dollars.
Okay.
So it, it was greater than, than what you just quoted.
Okay.
But I'm happy to get that information.
I was just curious. Yeah, thanks.
Go ahead, Councilman Cock.
So say, you know, it sounds like we've got support for the 0%. So we would be banking, though, something for next year, right?
Yes, although you don't have to take bank capacity. One other question I've received before is when there is a levy lid lift, like there was in 2024, it, it gets kind of reset. And even though we took the 1% in 2023, we didn't take the banked capacity in 2023. But that is no longer available to the city because we did the kind of reset with the 2024 levy lid lift. Just, just giving some extra information.
And the, the money from the sale of the property would go into the general fund. Will the new construction always also go there, too? 4,000?
Yeah, we allocate money to a couple of different funds, so it's not specifically earmarked for anywhere particular, but we allocate to the general, general fund, parks and facilities, street fund, and cemetery. Just based on, we basically fund all of those other funds, including the li, the amount we, of the library. We basically allocate the necessary amount to those funds, and then the remainder is in the general fund.
I'm sorry to ask this another question.
Go ahead.
I saw late, maybe this is later in the agenda, we talk about it, is some more people for stormwater, so that would be paid for out of a stormwater fund, not the general fund, right?
Correct. Okay. Councilwoman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Kelly, I just had one for you. So we hear about inflationary costs going up on the city, but from what I understand, like, we're taking on revenue from sales tax. So the sales tax is on the cost of the product that is also going up. That's the inflationary increase. So if a, if a product is $10 and it goes to $15 on a 50% increase, then we're taxing $15. So that means the tax we receive is 15% or 50% more as well. So it's, it's kind of going up with the inflationary, so our intake is also that same. Property taxes are a little bit different, but the property values are rising, too, and it's, and one could say that they're matching that inflationary cost, even though the sales aren't happening. So we're, I've heard that we don't get increase when property values go up because of the way the levies or the taxes are structured. But I, I do know that for a lot of people, when the taxes go up in property tax, their value, their, the tax they're paying is also going up. When the home value goes up, the, the money they're paying is still going out more. So they do pay more. So I'm wondering, when we say that because of inflation happening, we need to raise more taxes, we need to get more revenue, how does that relate if the money we're taking in is already going up?
So, you know, we don't have an exact, like, dollar amount answer for that, but the, I think last time I presented, that 22% of the general fund is funded by property tax. So, you know, I don't know the exact amount that all the other portion goes up, but using sales tax as an example, you know, sales tax may go up as well with the value of products. But that, that 22% of our revenue from property tax, that portion is not going up with inflation. So although, you know, 78% of our revenues hypothetically could go up with inflation as well, we still have that remaining portion of revenue that's property tax that's not going up with inflation. So those numbers that, that we presented last time with the chart of property tax and inflation, that does include new construction as well. So that's included in the, the increases in the property tax. So that's, that's that part of it.
Can I ask you a quick question then on that real quick? So we, we received a document today from Impact Bulletin, thank you, Madam Mayor. And it shows us that house prices, median home costs were at 281,000 in 2015, and now they're at 579,000. So that, that's well over 100% increase or 100% inflationary increase, if we were to think of it that way. So aren't we getting property taxes based upon that, and haven't we seen an increase from what we were taking in, in 2015 to now?
So the, the value of property in city limits does not directly, does not at all really impact the amount of property tax we collect. The way property tax, the only way property tax increases is the 1% increase in new construction, unless we do a levy lid lift. So if, if all properties, and we gave this example last time, if all properties in Seadruly went up, like, collectively, they went up 4.8%. If your home value also went up 4.8% and nothing else changed, then you're going to pay, and council votes 0%, you're going to pay the exact same amount to City of Seadruly in your property tax. If all of the city went up 4.8%, but your property, the estimated value, went up 11%, your property tax will go up because you have a greater share of the value in Seadruly than you did last year. So it, just because property tax goes, or your value goes up, does not mean that our property tax will go up. However, I didn't know this before, that the, when the county assessor came in and spoke, he spoke about business property in that during COVID, a lot of the business property went significantly down in value. So those properties went significantly down in value, and then homes continued to increase in value. So a lot of the shift in who pays the property tax moved away from the property owners who owned businesses and shifted to people who own their homes. So that's part of the reason. And again, that's, like, people with homes now have a greater percentage of the value in Seadruly than they did before, so they pay more property tax. And then I think it was actually two times ago, when the county assessor spoke, that at one point, the state school levy was actually based on a levy rate. So it, they could increase more, it was increased more than 1%. So that, that's been several years now. But people did see a big jump in their property tax. But people did see a big jump in their property tax bill due to the state levy, which we, as local jurisdictions, that was not the same thing for us. So that could be some of the reasons, like over the last 10 years, a individual homeowner has seen their property tax increase in addition to the city's levy lid lifts.
So when we're looking at the budget, because we've only raised the taxes once for 1%, one time, a few years ago, I think we all remember that. Before that, it hasn't been raised at all. So we're, we're in essence, according to that, taking in the same revenue minus that, plus that 1% that we added on as we were when 2015 was? So that's it. When we're looking at the budget and we're looking at revenue streams in for property taxes, it, it's the same, basically, if, if the value of Seeger Woolly as a whole, businesses, retail that are owned, houses that are owned, they're all raising up the same. We're taking in that same revenue stream?
The total budgeted levy, so the total amount of money that comes in from 2015 has gone up for a couple different reasons. Number one, every year taking the new construction. So when you have new construction, that adds, like in this year, it's $85,000. There was a lot of new construction. That's not what it is every year, but, so you take 25th, what, what it was in 2014, add new construction, that's our new budgeted levy. 2016, add new construction, that's our budgeted levy. So between 2015 and 2020, and then in 2020, we added the levy lid lift, so that increased the budgeted levy. 2021, just new construction added. 2022, just new construction. 2023, added new construction and the 1%. 2024, added the levy lid lift. And it, and then actually in those years, it's not like adding to the levy, it's just like setting a new levy amount. So just like starting fresh. In 2024, we decided this is how much money we are going to collect. The voters said yes. 2024, we basically just started fresh, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. So basically, when we do a levy, sorry, levy lid lift, we're basically doing this 1% increases, but it's going to the voter in essence, except they're voting for more than the 1%, of course. But it, it's kind of like that, 2020, there was a reset. So basically, they voted on the, on the property tax increase. 2024, they voted on the property tax increase. And so it's kind of the same thing, except it's in their court. If that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and there's no, I mean, the 1% and the new construction, those are very like strict, like this is what you can do. With the levy lid lift, there isn't that same restriction. I mean, obviously, there's a cap, like you can't go any amount in your levy, but essentially, yes.
If there are no more questions or comments, I'm going to close public comment and then ask council if they are wanting to move forward with a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance with a 0% property tax increase.
Madam Mayor, second. Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilwoman Diamond, to approve ordinance 210825, the 2026 budget of property tax with a 0% increase. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. All right, that was our first public hearing. Moving on to our second one, and again, Kelly, this is you, the budget amendment is the first read, so we're not looking for any kind of a motion tonight, I take it.
Correct.
Unless the council wants to move forward with it. So again, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing right now. Same method as before. Kelly will talk about the budget amendment. I'll open it up to the public for comment. Once they are done, I will turn it over to the council. So Kelly, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city already has an approved 2026 budget passed in November of 2024, which has been quite some time now. As part of the 2025-2026 biennial budget, the city is required to do a mid-biennium budget review and update sometime between September 1st and December 31st. We've included, we've done that review and made some recommended amendments to the budget. So attached in the packet is, is, is our proposed amendments that are balanced. We've also attached a summary of the proposed changes as well. A couple things to note about things that we've changed and things that we, we have to update every year at about this time. The city has an indirect cost allocation plan, and we update that every year. So that's been updated as needed. We also update the wage and benefit estimates. So the wage tables will increase anywhere between 2% and 4% estimated. We still don't have the number, the CPI yet for those. As we talked about last time, we do know that medical benefits will increase 8.7% this year. And to get a little more exact number, right now, just in the general fund, the 74% of budgeted expenditures in the general fund are wages and their related benefits. So as the mayor said, we're not requesting a motion tonight to approve this ordinance. We'll be back on November 25th for a second read of this. Woody, could you go to page 84? Just wanted to show some of the documents that are included with the budget. So this, this, these first rows in this first table, this is what we're estimating or projecting our beginning cash for each fund to be. These aren't exact numbers because we're not done with 2025 yet. But then it shows our budgeted revenues and our budgeted expenditures, and then what we project our ending cash will be in each of those funds. As you can see, all of the funds are projected to have a positive ending cash. That's definitely what you want, to have a positive ending cash balance. And then this next table, we exclude beginning cash and ending cash, and all we're looking at is the current year revenues minus the current year expenditures, and that gives either an excess or deficit in each fund. And some funds, you, you actually want a deficit in those funds because we build up those funds over time and then spend the money on specific projects. But you can see that when we do that, we do have the cash available in that fund to do that. So the real estate excise tax is an example of that, that next year we plan to spend more money than we have for some specific projects, but we have the cash in that fund to do that. And then if you go to page 85, Woody? This is just a quick summary of all of the changes from the already approved 2026 budget. Again, it includes the indirects cost allocation changes and the wage and benefit changes. We also made some changes to the street and arterial street fund, and then the funds that transfer money in to that fund to cover those. So we've just updated the list of projects, so the expenditures in those projects, and then the associated revenue. And then we've included a report of the proposed changes. That gives a little bit more of the detailed summary. We didn't include the FTE count, but currently with what's proposed here, we have no proposed changes to the FTE count, although that, that may change based on the stormwater that, that, that one of the council members talked about previously. And that's, that's all I got for the budget amendment.
All right, thank you, Kelly. So at this time, I will open it up to the public. If anyone in the public would like to make a comment regarding the budget amendment, now is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will turn it back over to the council. And council, this is your opportunity to ask questions, make comments. Go ahead, Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kelly, the 8.7% increase for medical, is that fixed or is that just our estimate of what's going up?
That is the number.
Okay.
We, we've received that amount from AWC, which brokers our insurance.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Henderson?
Thanks. So a few questions. I'm seeing three separate line items. There might be, either I'm not reading it right, or there might be a typo in the, in the human services one, because up above it says an additional $7,000 for, in the HR budget, but it's only showing six here to me in the, in the HR budget for meals and travel and tuition and registration as an increase. And then there's another one in executive, an additional 7,000 for a conference. And then in engineering, it's showing on page 91, an additional 7,000 on the budget for two conferences in Gettysburg leadership. So if what I'm reading is right, we're, that's $21,000 to send people to conferences? Is that, am I?
Yeah, we sent some people to the leading edge program at the University of Kansas last year, several of our directors. We're looking to continue that process. One of the key people to send is our new HR manager. So that's what you see in the executive budget. I'll let Bill speak to his, his piece of it.
Bless you.
So some of our budget increases in that item for engineering, the County Road Administration Board in particular has opened up their design conference in the spring to cities, and so I want to take advantage of that for a city engineer and assistant city engineer. It's, it's just a uniquely targeted conference to Washington Public Works design, both road design and utility design for various things. County Road Administration Board doesn't always open that up to cities. It's usually limited to people who work for counties. And then, and then I guess Charlie went to the Gettysburg Leadership Conference this last year, and I suggested that I might benefit from that as well. And so that's something I also put into the budget as a possibility for doing that. And then it also covers our, our funding conferences we go to to make sure we can leverage as much money as we can for projects.
Councilman Henderson?
Oh, okay. I, yeah, I have a lot more questions, actually. We have $11,000 for an HR intern. We just hired a full-time HR person, and we're looking to spend $11,000 more.
That is actually not in there. It's in the note. It says paid intern estimated 10 weeks, $11,000, not currently included in budget. That's just a note that if, if we were to hire an HR intern, that it would be $11,000.
Okay.
And, you know, some of these notes are for the council, but also internal. So just wanting to keep that number known to us in the budget.
And then I have a $45,000 increase for a class and compensation study. It went from 5,000 to 50?
Yeah, so we have now done a classification compensation study since 2022. It's recommended you do one every two to three years. So we're looking to do one at this point, and we're actually a little bit late on that, going early, basically early in '26 to lead into negotiations for both AFSMI and non-represented employees. Police and fire are a little bit different. But yeah, the cost of that is significant. Last time we did this, we had $75,000 in the budget. We were able to find a provider to do it for less, but we had only a couple of bidders under $50,000 last time, and I don't expect we're going to see that necessarily this time around, because it was a few years ago.
Okay. Well, if it's needed, I guess my question is why wasn't it included when we did the budget last November?
You know, honestly, we just didn't think of it at that time. And now we've got a little bit more horsepower with an HR manager to help execute it.
Okay.
All right. I don't see any of the, oh, Councilman Lavaca?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick question on the, on the general notes for 2026 budget revenues. We do have the housing and services, and it shows that we did do a budget revenue of 300,000, budget expenditures of 611 to the RJ group. And so it shows a negative or deficit of 311,000. I thought all that money was already allocated from the 2025. Are we pulling from 2026 for that?
So we're gonna, so Woody, if you'll go back to page 84, that the money is there, if you scroll down a little bit so we can see, oh, actually, maybe we can. Fund 117, that we do have the cash available in that fund, and, but we don't expect to pay that $611,000 out before the end of the year. So that would be in the 2026 budget, like the money that actually leaves in 2026. So it's coming from previous revenues or our previous pot of money.
The ending cash balance, basically?
The ending cash balance, yep.
Okay, I just wanted to check on that. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Kestie, you had your live on?
Thank you. Because of Councilman Henderson's question, it got me thinking, are there any, rather than going to Gettysburg, is there a way to zoom in? Do they offer classes like that through these things?
Not for that particular program. It's, it's pretty hands-on in the field experience.
Councilman Burns, I can't tell with your water bottle if you, all right, thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thanks. So following up on that, what, what about these other two conferences that we're looking at? The 7,000 for HR to attend leading edge, and then 7,000 for someone, a staff member from the executive to attend leading edge? Are those available online, or are those also?
They're not available online. The leading edge, part of the leading edge is a diagnostic change model that we're using here in the organization. We've been using it for the last several years. It's very important that we get HR fully up to speed on it. We can, you know, do some training internally on our own, but that experience is pretty critical for HR. So that, that's the reason that's included in there, in the, in the budget for HR. Nobody from, nobody else from executive is, is going, just, just our HR manager.
Well, there's a $7,000 increase to the tuition and registration on the executive side, and then when you go down to HR, it shows a $5,000 increase, but the note says it's seven for, so are you paying for that out of the executive funds?
We, we have been doing some HR stuff out of executive funds, but I'm, I'm not sure exactly. We're going to have to look into that. There is no, there's only planned to send one person now from HR to leading edge between executive and HR.
But we will follow up on that, because maybe we have it in there twice, budgeted in there twice.
Well, the, the figure, the figure that it tells me up there, and then when I go down to HR, it says 800 for RT to KS, 1,700 for lodging, and it goes on and on, and then tuition and registration, it goes from original 3,000 to proposed 6,000 with a change of positive 300, or a positive 3,000 for a 200% increase for leading edge conference in, I'm assuming that's Kansas City?
Yeah, it's in the Kansas City area.
Okay. On, in March of 2026, and then an AWC labor relations conference in Yakima. Is that AWC training available online?
AWC is not online as well. AWC is not online as well, that one isn't. But that, that's another critical one here in state for labor relations. Definitely recommended for HR.
So can we refine that out as to like what exactly the asks are there?
Yeah, we can clarify that.
When we come back the next time?
Can I ask?
I'm sorry, okay, Councilman Lavaca?
On the lodging part, how long is the, is that for both of them? That's the lodging cost altogether for lodging throughout the conferences? Or is it the one conference? Because in that conference, only like four days, is it, or six, five days?
Leading Edge is, it's a full week.
Is it, yeah, a full week, so a work week, five days.
It actually goes through both weekends as well.
Oh, it does, so they don't get days off?
No, they don't. Ask Bill, he did it, around the clock.
So it's a full seven day or is it a nine day?
Oh, is it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? So it's a? It, it's an eight-day conference generally. The last day is four hours, but the other six days are 12 to 14 hours a day.
Okay, I was just checking this thing's about, if you're, if you're not staying at the dive down by the rope.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, I am going to close the ordinance number 210925, 2026 Budget Amendment Number One, public hearing. And again, this is a first read, so this will come back. I'm sorry, Kelly, did you say this is coming back neck, at the next meeting? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, and now moving on to our, did I pick it up? It did. New business, we do not have any unfinished business, which is wonderful, moving on to new business. Number one is the easement Township Street. It's SR9 and John Liner Road, the McGargill Road intersection improvements. And Mr. Bullock?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So this first piece of business is for the roundabouts, both the fan, what's known as the fan property and the Totino property. Those are the diagonal properties we own. What we're doing is establishing the equivalent easements for the other two corners of property upon ourselves. So that way, when we sell the properties, the roundabout has all the right-of-way and easements it needs. This include the basic easements for the sidewalks, but also the sight distance easements that we have on the other two corners. So approaching traffic can see pedestrians in the crosswalks. So basically, that's what, as I can describe some things some more if you'd like, but it's basically taking those triangles of property on the corners to make sure the roundabout, any roundabout operates as, as a whole transportation system. And we, those weren't done previously because we purchased the entire property on both those properties. So now as we're getting ready to potentially sell those, we need to establish these easements to make all four corners act the same.
Okay. All right, are there any questions? Oh, lights are going on. Councilman Cock?
Just, not on the easements, but when does the lighted crosswalk go in?
So, the lighted crosswalk and the streetlights are, both have poles that are coming in in mid-December.
Okay.
This, I described this, I think, one or two council meetings ago, where right now we have some temporary, our, our FBS, those are the pedestrian push-button signals. We put on McGargill in the north side of the intersection on, on Township or SR9. And this is right now pretty much a nationwide long lead item. And Valmont Industries is the one providing the poles. And they are the contractor on the state contract that provides all the signal poles and mast arms for the entire state. And so we're under what's called a force majeure situation where they can't deliver them any sooner than, than they're due in.
Well, it'd be nice to at least get that lighted crosswalk in before the kids come back from the Christmas break.
Yes, sir. That's, that's the intent and the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Henderson?
I'm ready to motion.
All right, are there any other questions or concerns? All right, Councilman Henderson?
Motion authorized. Mayor designated assigned deed and dedication for public right-of-way inside distance easements for two city-owned parcels at State Route 9 Township Street and John Liner McGargill Road.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, second by Councilman Cock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. On to item number two under unfinished business. This, Mr. Bullock is also looking for a motion here. This is for caretaker, park caretaker agreement 2025, 225 CN, and 2025, 226 CN for Olmstead Park and Riverside Park. Go ahead, Mr. Bullock.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city Public Works has conducted interviews for a caretaker position. So as you know, Olmstead Park will be our fourth caretaker residence. So the caretaker from Riverfront Park decided that he'd really like to move to Olmstead Park. And so we've had a bit of a shuffle. And then we also had an interview process in our camp host for Riverfront Park would like to be the caretaker for Riverfront Park. So there's Riverfront caretaker vacated, Olmstead are successful candidate to replace, was it Doug, at Riverfront Park. They want to have a permanent position instead of just a summer position. And then next spring, we will hire a new camp host for Riverfront, because now that's vacant. So we've gone through really a pretty normal interview process, even though these are contract employees. And these are the two employees that were selected to cover those positions.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Henderson, I think you had your light on first?
I'm ready to motion.
Okay, Councilman Cock?
Just a quick question, do the camp hosts, do they live there too?
So yes, oh, no, sorry, the camp hosts, they live there during the summer. So they get a slot for an RV. And then they help make sure everybody's paid and, and a certain amount of, soft security is what I call it, as well as, you know, litter control and that type. And they're there as the point of contact for anybody in one of the RVs. If they have an issue, they go to the camp host first and then they help them solve their problem.
Yeah, they do that.
But they're seasonal employees, as opposed to the caretakers are year-round employees. And they're, and I shouldn't say employees, they're, they're contract employees. They actually have a contract with the city, but they don't necessarily work for the city as a regular employee that gets benefits and whatnot.
All right, thank you, that's great.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We got some great caretakers around. I'm glad to see Ken wanting to head up there. I think he does a great job at Riverfront and, yeah, he's got a great attitude, they all do. So I'm, I'm really glad that we have this opportunity in our parks. A lot of parks don't have caretakers the way that we do, and they go the way, they go downhill quickly. But it's also about that attitude. And so we have, they're the face of Sejjo Woolley. So having a great attitude, being professional, willing to help, that's what they've done. And I think Ken is a great choice for the new Olmstead opening, because he's already familiar with the city. He knows how we are, and he's a great face for the city. So, great job, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burns?
I'll echo what Councilman Lavaca, Member Lavaca just said, and I'd like to make a motion of receipt.
Okay, all right.
Second.
All right, who said second? I'm sorry, okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns to approve the motion to execute the park, the park caretaker agreement, both of them, 2025, 225 CN and 2025, 226 CN for Olmstead Park and Riverfront Park. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, council. Motion carries. On to our last item, item number three. This is for the stormwater management plan. This is the revised rate proposal. And Mr. Bullock, I'll let you walk this through with the council.
Okay, thank you. So council, as you remember, I think it was back on the last meeting in July, we gave our presentation of the new stormwater comprehensive plan. And the consultants were our primary presenters on that particular meeting. And they presented the council with three different scenarios, rate scenarios and, and funding scenarios. So after that meeting, both my team with Nathan and, and Dave Davidson went back. And I, and I kind of came up with a fourth scenario and a way to take some of these different goals and stretch them out a bit so we could flatten the, flatten the curve, so to speak. So each, each of these three scenarios, and that's on that table 8.6 in your packets, the summary of those. You know, they basically start out at either six and a half, some of them are six and a half, some of them are 8%, some are 9.75%. And they kind of give you a, a different curve, some increasing and then decreasing down to 4% at the end. And so what we did, the concept was to hire that, one additional stormwater employee. Because right now, really, the team we have on stormwater is fairly reactive. There's kind of a maintenance level right now with leaves especially cleaning out all those catch basins. But really, we, we don't have that extra employee to be proactive. So it's kind of business as usual and react to things the best we can. And so the thought process was if we could hire that additional employee in the first quarter of next year, instead of hiring a second employee two years later, push that out to at least five years down the line. And that will not allow our, basically the stormwater segment of our ops team to be able to have a single person dedicated to cameraing sewer lines and doing physical evaluations of them in the summertime when everybody else is busy mowing grass and taking care of parks and those types of things. That will let, allow us, one, to potentially see if there's some remedial measures for some of these seven, because we have basically seven big covert projects and three water quality projects on the new stormwater plan that is basically predictive to legacy knowledge of Dave and Nathan and some of our other folks. And they know their stuff, but at the same time, they also don't have somebody cameraing things all year round. And we have a dedicated camera and van just for stormwater that largely isn't used for most of the year. So being able to do that will allow us to evaluate and proactively figure some of these things out. If we can take some of those big projects and extend the life of that particular facility for a while, gives us more chance to plan for grant funding and that type of thing. But also, it flattens that curve. We're not trying to do everything in 10 years, we can maybe do it in 15 years. So we took those concepts back to our financial consultant, and they ran it through the model. And this comes up with a different model that allows us to go down to 5% consistently for the whole 10 years. And to get better expectation for annual rates and what they'll do, as well as it brings it down from, again, some of these years are, and the first three scenarios were the original three, are as high as 8% for most of the time, or even six and a half. So we're bringing it down to five, which is about as much as we think we can do. And at the same time, we also, we were doing rate analysis fairly frequently. But if we spread that next rate analysis of four or five years, then with having a better under, boots-on-the-ground understanding of the, of the status of our system, we then either, I mean, one or two things are going to happen. I don't think we're going to find that everything's about to fall apart and we never knew it. But potentially, we might even be able to lower that rate change more, because we'll have a better understanding. But certainly, we'll be able to have more accurate information, more current information to evaluate a new financial model for it. So this gives us an option that's lower than the ones that were presented to you in July, partially because we put our heads together, brainstormed, and came out with a flatter curve. And, and, but what it does involve is in hiring a person one year sooner and hiring the second person probably five to six years later. I can keep talking about it for a while, but I hope that explains things fairly well. But the idea was to try to come up with something that was more predictable. And it ended up, the financial model worked out that we could actually make it cheaper over time than what was originally proposed at council. So I'll be happy to answer questions if I can.
Councilman Henderson?
Thank you. Bill? I, I remember this discussion, and it was a very painful discussion to be looking at those three models. None of them we liked. So, big kudos to you and your team for getting this done. This is huge.
Thank you.
This is, this is exactly what I think everyone envisioned, something better. And you certainly got that done. So I'm, I'm very impressed with what you guys were able to get accomplished here.
Thanks.
Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, it's nice to see it's a bit lower, you know, for sure. And, you know, it was good to have the consultants, even though I still feel like, you know, we spend a lot on consultants, and then they come back and say raise it up a little bit. But I think it's, it's, you know, we just had a discussion on property tax of $1.17 a month overall. And so this is eventually going to raise it up about $10 a month overall in about 2034, where it's definitely going to start off at $1.42 over next year, and then go up and go up and go up significantly every year after. But I think that this is a better way, because we do see where that money is going, and we do need to get the FTE in place. So it is nice to be able to, to have that drawn out, have a scripted plan, and then to see that increase. But I think that, you know, like PSC or like, you know, water or, or what we control, our garbage, our sewage, our stormwater, the rate increases also add to the community cost, for sure. And that's what they're, that's what people are always talking about with the, the cost. This is significantly higher than what we just said was way too much to do. So, throw that out there, thanks.
Councilman Burns?
I just wanted to say I appreciate the no-new debt. Anytime that we're tacking on debt, we're just paying even more interest and sending out more money. So I appreciate making this an even line, 5% as we go on, and not incurring any further debt. I appreciate your team figuring this out, thank you.
Councilman Cock?
Yeah, I just want to echo what several people have said. This was, you went back and looked at a problem, and even though it's not a perfect solution, it does ease the fees for our already strapped citizens. Thank you.
All right. If there are no questions or comments, it looks like he's looking for a motion to adopt. Does council want to move forward with the motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, thank you. Second? All right, thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Henderson, a second by Councilwoman Kestie.
Option four is presented, just to be clear.
I'm sorry?
With the option four is presented, just to be clear.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to adopt the proposed stormwater rate of an increase of 5% as outlined in the stormwater capital funding scenario, option four as presented, to include hiring an additional stormwater maintenance employee in 2026. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Now we have on the agenda an added executive session. This is for possible litigation. This falls under RCW 4230, 110, 1I. How long do you think we will need?
Mayor, just to clarify, it's also pending litigation?
Pending litigation, thank you.
10 minutes to start?
I'm sorry, Nikki, say again?
10 minutes to start?
10 minutes, okay, thank you. We'll start with 10 minutes. It is 7:06 right now, and we'll, if we're not back by 7:16, we'll come out and extend the time. we'll come out and extend the time.
And then they go, okay, they're in the pen, shoot one.
Well, they're looking at me, well, we could go in there and make a look at him, and as they go through him, you get a clean shot of the buffalo. Let's go, think about that.
What was that movie where they took kids in that military truck? Took off the military truck in the down there. Off the block or something, I don't know. Killed a buffalo in the pen.
Oh, that's right.
I think they busted him out.
And it was a little buffalo.
Well, I don't know, can you bump that one out?
He said they shot him eight times, and nine, and like thirty ounce six, and just kept coming.
Why would they bump that?
There is a buffalo, a smaller one, not the biggest one. Did a cannon, I don't know, sold me a. Yeah, that'd be something. I wouldn't want to get in trouble, I mean, actually, there they are. And make a move. I don't know if that one had, kind of, had a foot lock, yeah, they used my horse to lift it up. It's on a horse, a horse on the ground. And I was already going off the side of it, probably just tail of horses going side with it.
Did you hit your head?
Yeah, I tried, but got up in the middle like crazy, do that, kind of, right the other way. And my dad and my brother would pick up, luckily they were safe, you know?
They're just laughing.
I just went right over the side of that pickup, probably about six feet away, I started to jump there, and then went back to pick up. That'd be you, and you'd been saying that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right? Yeah. Yeah, those days. Talking about my cousin with lack of common sense, I got, I don't know, worse than mine, when he was trying to rope off that horse. He went to the hospital, supposed to rope him off, he thought it was, made it work. He didn't, he didn't have the courage, but it was in place.
Did your property have a go for down, both sides of the gap?
I don't know, I don't think it went, I didn't go down.
Funny you have.
It was pretty long.
My neighbors went down, mine went down, old timers went down supposedly, my sons went up, but mine went down. The twenty thousand big kid.
There it is. I think about someone. I don't remember who it was, it was Sean Hee.
Let me go. All of them, all of them.
Well, you have to, it was Sean Hee, and I thought you had, I looked at the species of, what, big, large, majority ones?
Where are you at, look? I'm living in another state, back out of this one, or this one sucks anymore over here. I don't, I don't like to park it up, but it's, you know, too many people, traffic is just gotten horrendous. Going through Clear Lake and.
I don't mind it so much, I got that in the pickup, a lot more fun to drive.
Yeah, a little bigger cover.
Well, I just, it's got a lot more power, and it just handles really good for a bigger truck. You know, it's a lot easier to drive.
Your other one's doing fine though.
No, I've got a couple of things in there. I don't need to.
I thought, well, did you figure out what was causing that?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, it's like, there's a piece that goes right in where your transmission, here it goes, and it's coming out.
That one, did you film it on the transmission?
No, it was right up here on the transmission.
Really, dude?
Yeah.
Council is still in discussion in executive session, and we are going to take another ten minutes, so ten, seven twenty-six will be our new time.
You didn't get any rain all the way there?
It's cold. No, it's covered though.
It's about eight seven there.
Eight seven?
Caught the cool.
Can I find a place to live down there?
It's free, I'm in, again, in Allen, where we live. Park there, drive it down, bounce a tank, get water.
Yeah, that's, how far down is that?
I don't know exactly where it is.
No, how many miles?
Um, I don't know yet.
Was that the guy that was up here for a while?
He lives here. He's a camper, he's a camper.
On the pickup?
Yeah.
I wonder how I do with four cats in the camper, I mean.
Castle, rugby hunts.
They already do. Uh, can't leave them. I guess they could leave them here, but I'll show them these cats, will I?
I don't know, I have to be honest.
She sure likes that cat.
Yeah, she does, she does.
Well.
That's a cat, that's a cat.
Who does?
It's a really good place to have one.
Know what is a good place?
Um, it might be a house. Actually, you need to stuff in your house.
You know, I got four dicks, I had four boys, a brasky, and a night house there one day, and went back the next day or not, and the other rats came over and ate them, really did.
Flipped down the way in.
Well, I don't, they just passed, I mean, they wouldn't pass over the top.
And they'd get over there.
They eat each other all the time.
Maybe it's four, four or six rats in my neighbors'.
Yeah.
This town is littered with rats.
Oh, there are, yeah, there should be a rat convention.
My, my other place, I killed a, probably, I think, four mice over there, or rats over there, too.
Ah, the guy over there south of us, and over there, he used to work at the men's bowling store. He had something like that figured out, like what you got. He just, he got a lot of them, big mother bear, and they fall off and drown.
Yeah, I put a bucket in my horns, and she's got, got locked, I just got another one there.
Maybe, yeah. Yeah.
And I told them, stay away from, from here mice. Droppings in here, and it, it, it's on your virus.
Oh, yeah, really, it's going on.
That works out.
You never know, they were treating the, uh, the, they were a quick goat, and she's throwing down those old punches around you.
Yeah.
And, gee, they love that stuff, too.
I don't know, that's put a lot over there. Put a lot.
Yeah, that'll eat anything.
I throw bread and junk out, my scraps out. Just on the year, it's gone in, in speed, the crows and the, now the seagull over here, everything's gone instantly.
They love you for it.
Keeps them out, keeps them out, gets in the garbage. They always always stay out of the garbage cans and walk, flying stuff out. They take containers and everything else, and take them apart out there.
Next year, when they, when you're a camper, you want, they sure do, I mean. Instead of fishing, they got them up for rats.
Where is that, there's McDonald's right there.
That's where that, where's that?
There's McDonald's right there.
That's handy.
Everything, everything's earned, they need.
Yeah.
Except food's a little high there.
It's warm though. I had the cattle only back for a few months, so I sure got the pullet to pick up the pulley, and you know, I was down there.
Yeah, eight seven there, uh, good day.
Yeah, that'd be nice, my brother's going down, I call him up, Dad, said my hands hurt from the rub, it's been from the cold, the wet. Oh, really, you know, he's going down, you know, my older brother goes all over the country cruising, and he's getting back from somewhere, he took a bump off, you know, they're cruising each one, down somewhere, I don't know, usually on a boat.
He gets some water for ten cents a gallon, that's what it costs him for water.
That's cheaper here?
Yeah.
Yeah, majority of people, I think, go after the first, after Christmas, could be, it's near the end of year.
It costs them five hundred and forty dollars a gas to get there, and that's for the four fifty-four, before it's done.
About a year?
I don't know, two thousand something, I don't know.
Yeah, they usually have, if you got the field, Jackson was a lot better than that, the four fifty-four.
Well, they got throttle waddy, I don't know, and then they went, maybe went, after two or three children, I think it was throttle waddy.
Yeah, I don't know. They don't get too old anymore, they, you know, they aren't really a tough truck, all the way, three fifty's tough. The pullboard, they don't last as long.
He went, um, one thousand, two hundred eighty mile. Look, I mean, I had to add a few dollars to the production, trip the thing, um. Trip the old oner, or got a trip.
Yeah, I think that would be.
The gas is two eighty, two eighty-four, they're.
That's it?
Two eighty-four.
Got the same, right?
Or thirty-nine, I think it's a cheap, like, they're around.
You're right, yeah. Yeah. The silver, silver, they got so much, we're getting so much, okay, just, you know. Sorry for Sean Hee, she's had everybody look at that truck.
My own look, well, well, you can say it's four out, but it will run, there's one little part, they hit run again.
I mean, mine was running.
No idea. That's a long, if you go down that road, you have three, four hundred dollars on it, you know. It has one bad cylinder in it, that's it.
Yeah. Well, if they don't run, they don't run, you can't fix them, they're a little hell, that's a old truck.
For Paul Larry, I might real good, but, um.
She got the wrong bad gas or something like that.
We put some chain, uh, chainsaw gas in it, and then it sort of, but I think it's happened problems before that.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I'm not getting a story straight for her.
Well.
There's a pressure sensor that made the out.
There's a lot of that truck.
That's flooding out is what it's doing.
You should sell her, I don't know, to get to the place where, at least it run, maybe.
Well, she needs to have it running itself, making it available.
Well, she could sell it to you.
I don't, I don't want it.
Why not?
I've got enough interest, I don't want anymore, can't do it.
Yeah. I just feel sorry for her, I don't, how's she getting around, her friends and brothers and?
Yeah, I do.
You know, it's not my friend to live out there.
She's working for a broker, I guess, a little bit, so.
Good. What's you?
Um, I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah. Well, that's impressive, she tries pretty hard, but, um, dinner come there, and she's been pretty good. She's got the heat, you know, it's kind of, she's got pretty good, the heat, there.
I'm not, I'm Mr. Heater.
That's your what?
Mr. Heater.
Mr. Heater? What's that mean?
The propane heater.
Oh. That's warmer than where she was a couple of years ago.
Yeah. And she was out there, living in that garage, so I bought a heating blanket for her. That was the start of it.
Well, that's good, yeah. Yeah, that's actually a good one. I don't know what to, of course, living in that apartment, living in apartments, the little kids, taking care of the kids, and all the stuff, well, I'll have to, go with us, probably go with us, too. It might make it much more, you know.
Chicken something, I think.
Yeah, it didn't look very good to me, anyway. Sometimes you're there, I'll just sit down, get a couple of DVDs or something, but it's fun, I'm a cat, I'm a cat.
No, my kid, I don't think he's been working anywhere lately either, there's no job, there's no work out there. His president in office, they're all government jobs.
I hope he won't be around in a couple of years, although, if he should, I'll have to kick him out.
Well.
I hope they kick him out, that's terrible.
He vote, that one lady got elected, and now she gets the medals out.
She's getting them out?
Yeah, she'll vote for it, and that, that'll throw them to the public, they have to give them out.
A lot of people wanting to go.
Hopefully, some people are going to jail for that, that's good.
It is, yeah, you're right. You're right, but if I'm wrong, you know, like, saying, you know, be the one probably to feel it. He blames everybody himself.
He's in line.
He blames everybody.
Everybody for themselves.
Well, he got the, he got the Knicks gonna stop a little bit, but that's just an act of a fan.
Yeah, well, they started flooding in when he told, when the roof found out that he's putting up a wall, they started flooding there.
There was jobs, putting up a wall?
It is seven twenty-six, and we are still in conversation in executive session. We hope to be out at ten, in ten more minutes, at seven twenty, seven thirty-six.
I'd like to know what you talked about in the executive sessions.
I'd like to go ahead and hear what they're doing.
Not that it affects the public, you know, the, well, being a public, the minded public, it needs to be out there.
Yeah, I think they took a little bit, a lot more into that.
They do this all the time anymore. Uh, they don't a lot, yes.
They don't a lot, but tonight.
Um, whether it's public employees. Whether it's public employees, litigation, shootings, or. We still haven't heard about the. You know, the, uh, community center, I haven't heard of the, the role of that yet. It's like, really, it's still under investigation. And how many police officers do you have that, are they working on this twenty-four hours a day, eight hours a day?
You can't go in there.
I don't know what this is, who knows what this is about. That's what I'm getting, getting at, you never know. I stood over, I sat here for one, and that's when they came up and then they purchased Ironskill. Public didn't know nothing about it.
They all did.
And then I looked it up. Uh. Somebody in August purchased, his husband, a new husband purchased the bowling ball a week later. The papers were done, signed, and these are two later. Yeah. That, that just seems to me like that's insider knowledge. But, but, you know, all of it.
Yeah.
And somebody else had a, somebody, somebody also had a cabin.
A what?
It's in the county.
Oh.
Yeah. It's only, it's only two, only two cabins.
Oh.
Somebody bought them?
Yeah. That's what it's worth now.
I think I have a cabin, right?
Makes you question your government, local government officials here.
Yeah, I should just be honest.
Yep.
We made a decision, you can't be, any witnesses are gonna shoot you all. I'll be right back. I'm not shooting you very. Take all witnesses away. Dog might hurt his feelings.
Damn library over there, a million plus.
And we got them.
One of the most locations you can put.
I, I just wish they would have made it look better, it's like this.
Yeah, they did, yeah, they put it right downtown because they wanted to draw people downtown.
Yeah, I'm sorry, government buildings, all they have to do is function.
Yeah.
They don't have to be extravagant. The money they spend.
That's like a barn.
That's what they wanted.
Yeah, they brought.
And each board siding, piece of siding was a hundred dollars a piece.
I mean, it's all faded.
Yeah, that, that's the, that's the age group they wanted, I guess.
They can look old like the rest of town.
But it should've been white.
What's that?
Should've been white, though.
Actually, uh, there was an ordinance in this, when the city burnt down, that you cannot build a wood structure in the downtown business district because of that, so they were supposed to be for it, because everything. And that's in the downtown business district. They tore down the oldest wood building, the structure left, Marshall Building. Old green building.
Yeah. That was by the, where the tracks were stolen.
Yeah. And then the city took the tracks out. Okay, they had to take the tracks out, it's not their property.
Well, I heard that they, uh, they wanted to put, uh, something there, and then the railroads still owned the land, so they said you can't build anything there.
It's body what they own, the rest is easy. And in the contracts, it says for, um, the construction, the maintenance, and operation, and trade work, for those purposes only. City's trying to take it over.
Really? That would be too bad.
Well, people have underlying property rights because it's only a weasement. Railroad doesn't own the land.
But they have the tracks there, so they must have owned it.
No, it's a weasement. Where, you know, you, they purchased weasement for the tracks. And when the tracks are removed, it should revert back to the original property owner, it's more. You know, if they own the land, it's case of it, or they case the property owner, it didn't be located. Same railroad. Uh, the chief prosecuting attorney, wire it. He has two pieces of that railroad property, hundred foot seconds. But, yeah, the other people aren't getting much. How, how will that work?
I'll have to, I'll have to listen to the minutes more. Minutes, please, tell me what's going on.
I don't know, if I remember, if they'll just mount a yep or.
It is seven thirty-six. We are back from executive session. And, uh, no decision was made. Um, with that, we are coming upon, uh, our last item, which is actually the adjournment. Next meeting, next city council meeting and finance information meeting will be, um, on the twenty-fifth, two weeks from now. Um, the, uh, committee meeting will be at five and our council meeting will be at six. All right, thank you, everybody, for good work tonight. Have safe travels. We're adjourned.